The project, again, in case people have questions.
Why don't we put it out here and then ask, Bruce, why don't you just take us, take us through it again?
Okay, sure. Okay, at the last meeting, I presented the, um, okay, sure. Can you hear me? Okay, yeah, at the last meeting, I had presented the two A and R plans, of two properties, one of which is on Fifteen Flag Road, the other one is on number two Strawberry Hill Road.
Actually, Bruce, could you tell us who you are?
Oh, Bruce. Yeah, my name is Bruce Salek from Bruce Salek and Associates. I'm a civil engineer and a land surveyor located in Marlboro, Mass.
Can you speak a little louder? I have a feeling that's helping those at home hear you, but not necessarily. Yeah, they're saying they can hear.
Oh, you can't hear me? Oh.
How's that?
Okay. Okay, and so, we prepared this plan for the request of the two landowners because they're swapping property between each other. One of the property owners is located on two Strawberry Hill Road, the other one is on Fifteen Flag Road. And the folks on two Strawberry Hill Road, they need more room behind their house. The owner of Flag, Fifteen Flag Road, they need some more frontage, a little bit more frontage to create a second lot. So they're swapping land, and that requires an A and R, it's the A and R process. And so, there are two plans here because one piece of property is in Land Court, the other piece of property is, is registered land, it's not in Land Court, it's recorded land. So you've got registered land in Land Court, you've got recorded land in the Registry of Deeds. So, the, both of these plans have been submitted to the Land Court. They vetted the Land Court plan because that's really all they're interested in. And so, we went through that process, had the meetings with them, and so on. So now, we're in the process of getting the A and R signed off so that we can go back to the Land Court and also to the Registry of Deeds. And so, the two landowners can have their attorneys convey the two pieces, subject pieces, between each other. So that's the purpose of the two plans. They've been checked through thoroughly. At the last meeting, one of the members asked for a letter, which we, from the attorney, that's representing this process here, has met with the Land Court folks. You should have a copy of that, his name is Bart Tilden.
Was it submitted?
It was submitted with the application, there should be copies of that. I believe I emailed that copy to you as well.
If it came in as an email, then it's not with the application, I might have overlooked it, but I can try to pull it up, so.
Okay, alright. And he pretty much reiterated what I had explained at the last meeting that I was here at, which is the, uh, the fact that the, if you have a piece of land that's, um, that's in recorded land, that recorded land cannot be conveyed through the Land Court process. And likewise, if you have a registered land in Land Court, then that cannot be conveyed and recorded into, to Land Court. So, so therefore, each of these parcels have to be recorded in their respective locations through the, their, either as a recorded piece or a registered piece. And he kind of explained that process in the letter, which is pretty much, embodies the, the Land Court system and the reg, the recorded system in Massachusetts. So we're just following that process. And so, these two pieces are going to be eventually consolidated into their own respective properties. But there's a two-step process. The first process is to create the individual pieces, the second process is to consolidate the two pieces.
Does, yes, Phil?
Bruce, do either of these parcels that are being swapped affect frontage?
Yes, yes, the, um, the parcel on Strawberry Hill Road has a lot of frontage, has excess frontage. And some of that frontage is going over to Lot 1B, which is a, a 3,997 square foot piece, a little triangular shaped piece. And that carries with it approximately 90 feet of frontage on Strawberry Hill Road. Now, the, um, the grantor of that piece, that triangle piece, has ample frontage on their own lot, which is Strawberry Hill Road. They have remaining frontage of 259 feet of frontage. They only require 150 feet, 150 feet on frontage.
And, and the lot that that is being transferred to has frontage on Flag?
Has frontage on Flag and Strawberry Hill Road.
And Strawberry, and how much frontage, after the swap, how much frontage does it have?
It's going to have over 150 feet on Strawberry Hill Road. And it's going to have approximately 250 feet on Flag Road.
You're all set?
Yes.
And, and you're all set, Bruce, as far as your presentation?
Yes.
Thanks for doing that, I'll, I'll just go through the board. Mr. Stein?
So, at the Mass Audubon presentation, one of the recommendations was that we review the previous site plan to make sure that any open space was still in the same place as it should be post-A and R because they had found examples where A and Rs had been recorded and the open space had been moved. Jennifer, I'm not sure if you have had a chance to compare this A and R to the previous plan to make sure that, other than the lot lines being moved per the A and R, nothing else has been changed.
I have not, I have not pulled past A and Rs or past plans. What date would the original A and R have been approved?
The original date for the Land Court piece is 1910. 1910. 19, yeah, it's over 100 years old, it's, it was 1910. And the, um, the Strawberry Hill Road plan was created in the 60s, it was a subdivision. I believe John Bartolini did that subdivision years ago. And so, that's, that's the date, the age of those two lots.
Is there designated open space on either of those lots?
Uh, no, no. We're not affecting any, you know, CRs or easements for open space on either of those two lots.
All set, Mr. Stein? Mr. Jenks?
No questions.
Mr. Mills?
No questions.
Mrs. Bartolini?
No questions.
Very good, entertaining motion to, we endorse both plans?
Yes, yes.
Now that they're on the proper paper?
Correct.
Okay. Mrs. Bartolini?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve both of the proposed A and R lots for both Flag Road and Strawberry Hill as a recognized land swap.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? Anyone from the audience, I forgot to ask? No? All in favor? Five to zero, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is discussion solar project, Green Communities. Chris Christopher, I don't see Mr. Christopher.
And I don't either, let's just look at the time, 7:15, okay. So I will update the board on the Green Communities. At our last meeting, we talked about sending out a letter to all the property owners. A letter went out October 19th to each property owner of, um, identified in the industrial park and industrial district, asking them if they were interested in a potential, or if they had any solar projects down the pipeline that they were interested in as-of-right zoning. And explain the Green Community requiring a one acre as-of-right zoning. I've heard from one individual so far, Chris Christopher, who came into my office a few weeks ago with a couple properties that he, um, thought might have potential for solar. Two of them, I believe, were in the residential, so I didn't think that they would qualify. But he is not here to discuss that. So, what I would recommend is that we wait and see what others come through, and then we can look at them all at, all at the same time to see if any of those projects make sense. And if the board has any questions at this time, I can answer them for you.
How many letters, approximately, did you send out?
Over 50. We sent out quite a few.
Very good, yeah, I agree with your, you know, it's not, it's not a topic that's red hot, so people will hopefully get to it and send in a response. We got one, so maybe there'll be others. Mrs. Bartolini, any questions, comments?
Well, I'm surprised that we, that we didn't get more response because while I've been ill, I've had a chance to catch up on newspaper reading. And there, it is red hot in several of the abutting communities. So, I mean, I, you know, one of the things I felt good about was that we have the, a good zoning bylaw, we'd be ready to handle it, and I'm surprised that we haven't received a bigger turnout.
Right, and in this case, Mr., is it Christopher, Chris Christopher, said that he himself had been exploring solar on one of the projects. So the timing, he felt, was, was right, and this was a property that abutted 495. So, again, it was the first response, so I guess we can wait and see if we have any others. But the letter did go out October 19th, so people have had opportunity. Jesse has a.
Mr. Stein?
If we do not, for some reason, get a proponent, is it still possible for us to become a quote-unquote "green" community in light of the fact that we've made good faith attempt?
Yeah, so the, let me back up, you don't have to identify a viable project. We, the planning board, has to identify one acre, a one acre minimum parcel that you feel would make sense as being as-of-right. And when we talked about that, the board indicated that they would feel comfortable with a property in the industrial park and industrial district because that's what's currently allowed by special permit. But if there was a viable project out there, then they'd be interested in hearing about that. When I spoke to the Green Community, Kelly, she said, early on, if you have a viable project, that would be the one that would make sense. So I don't know of any, you know, real projects out there unless we hear from folks. I do know that there's interest on, you know, Fay School and St. Mark's. I haven't heard of any other, um, businesses, et cetera, that have reached out to me in any way saying that they, they're interested.
And would they have interpreted our letter to industrial, industrial, as, as being pertinent to them? Or did they get CC'd on this letter even though their land is not industrial?
I only sent it to property owners in the industrial park and industrial district. We obtained a list from the assessor's office of all properties in those districts, and then sent a letter out to each property owner.
Does anyone feel we should CC them, since we know they're interested? Or just whole looking for the industrial? I, I don't have a position one way or the other, I'm just asking for the sense of communication.
Are those, are those two proponents necessarily by right?
No, right now, that's not allowed in any other district.
So I think that, to meet the green, excuse me, Green Communities criteria, it has to be somebody who is a candidate by right specifically.
Well, you can, you can make it by right. So you, this board could bring a revised article to town meeting, expanding the districts if you felt that, and I think we've discussed this, and I brought this up at a previous meeting, about expanding it to other districts, if you felt that you wanted to.
And at the time, we got the information from St. Mark's, they were arguing that their solar, um, complex would be part of the academic and science program at the school so that, that it was under the Dover Amendment that they'd be able to do it.
And right now, legal opinion, and I shared town council's legal opinion with St. Mark's, is that they would have to go before the ZBA for ZBA's determination on whether they'd fall under that exemption. So currently, it's only allowed, large ground-mounted solar is only allowed, and you should, we all know this, in the industrial park and industrial district by special permit. You can do rooftop, um, in any district. You can do systems smaller than 250 kilowatt, ground-mounted. And we've also identified the parking lot structures as ground-mounted. So those would only be allowed if they were 250 and larger in the industrial park and industrial districts.
Mr. Mills?
No questions.
Mr. Jenks?
No questions.
So we'll just revisit this, whether we get a response or not. I know the town planner, through her work last year, brought this to the attention of the planning board, the solar bylaw. And as Mrs. Bartolini said, it is a hot topic in the region. And so, it's very timely that the town planner was able to bring this forward, and the, and the planning board brought it to the town meeting where it was passed. So, we're in, we're in pretty good shape, and we'll revisit this again soon. If there's nothing else, we'll stay on time. It's now 7:30. Our next agenda item is the discussion Chestnut Hill Road preliminary subdivision. Does George need a tripod? You need a tripod, George, oh, you got one?
Yes, do you want me to give it up?
Yeah.
You're gonna have to speak up, I, I apologize, but for some reason.
Why don't we let the town planner speak, introduce this while George is getting set up?
So, just an update, this project is located on Chestnut Hill Road. It's better known as the Johnson Farm Property. It was not put back into Chapter 61A back in 2000, I believe, 14. It is identified in the open space plan as a priority site for protection or recreational use. George Connors, representing the applicant, came before the planning board a couple meetings ago, just in, for informal discussion. And has since gone before Sharp C. Sharp C discussed what was allowed under the bylaw and the three options. And then, most recently, the applicant went before the Open Space Preservation Commission, and now they're back informally to talk to the planning board. So, just to remind everyone, no formal application has been filed. Everything is just conceptual at this point.
Hold on a second, Bill, can you see those?
Can see them, yeah.
You, you can zoom in on them?
Yeah.
Okay. Just grab a mic and you're on, George. I'll grab that, uh, A and R.
And I'll request again, speak up, whatever they've got me on is handling pain but eliminating hearing.
So George, again, tell us who you are and why you're here.
My name is George Connors, I'm with Cornerstone Engineering, representing Mr. Bruce Wheeler and his company, Habitatech. With respect to 15 acres of land up on Chestnut Hill Road at the corner there, you can see those two plans. As Jen indicated, we had been talking to a couple of the boards and committees in the last couple of weeks after our first meeting with you, which we had identified basically as a due diligence. This is Mr. Wheeler with me now. As a due diligence, a effort to decide how we're gonna develop the property. On the right is the grid subdivision, the 15-acre site is fairly flat. There's some topography there that has an indication of very gentle rolling area. There's wetlands surrounding it to the top and to the right of the drawing. And then at the bottom of the drawing, you don't see that, there's the aqueduct. Chestnut Hill Road at that particular corner is one-way going to the left, coming down and then going to the left. And we've gone out there and done some soil tests, and we found that each of the lots had sand and gravel, two-minute perk. With the exception of Lot 6, there's a small sliver of till that comes in. We don't show it there because we haven't done any survey. But nothing that would impact the developability of the land with respect to either septic systems or stormwater management. The plan on the left is just a doodle, it's a concept. It has no mathematics, it has no ratio, it has no proportion. It simply takes the flexible bylaw and begins to apply it to the maximum. And that's not an engineered drawing, I can't stress that enough. What it shows is, on the left, at the corner of Chestnut Hill Road, is a green shaded area which we thought would be something to be preserved as an open space, somewhat in concert with the bylaw. And it would be a vista or a view from Chestnut Hill Road. Then there's a sort of a bent green line that's darkened in there. And that would be what we'd call a hedge row or a break, where we'd plant that with heavy dense vegetation and sort of shield what you see there, that conglomeration of boxes that go around the periphery of the property. And in the middle is the green area that we would propose to be some kind of a common, town common or project common or something like that. We feel that it is a project that could be worked into the land. It could protect the land to the effects and requirements or objectives of your bylaw, the flexible bylaw, and I'll go through that in a minute. But basically, the alternatives are those two plans, and the one on the left has all sorts of latitude to change things, move things around. But it's basically a discussion document drawing at this stage. And we've sought input from open space as well as the Affordable Committee. One of the issues we talked about with the Affordable Committee was moving some of these units off-site. We think that that's a possibility with them. Alternatively, some multifamilies onsite. There was some discussion about people moving into those multifamilies if they're the same size as the existing, or the proposed houses, the market rate. Then they'd be pretty costly to heat, maintain, and things of that nature. So we're exploring some options, and we think that the open, the Sharp C Committee would, has given us enough feeling that we could go forward and work this, either onsite or off-site, to the best benefit of the town. Onsite, we have a problem with them as duplexes, I think they've gone someplace else as duplexes. We have a problem with that with the, with respect to the flexible bylaw because the flexible bylaw has a component that talks about multifamily housing. And we don't want to have to deal with that in the flexible, it's a fairly complex bylaw. And that's where I'm gonna go next with respect to open space. So in terms of the Sharp C and the affordable component, if it's a 12-lot subdivision on the right, the, um, the percentage is 12 or 12 and 1/2, which gives us two affordable units that we would have to provide. Those two affordable units then translate to three bonus units for each. So 12 becomes 18 in that drawing on the left with those little rectangles. There was some discussion that we're not entitled to those three each, and that that's up to the planning board. But I would say that we really need to get those in order to make this work because you're building houses of whatever size for a lot less than you can sell them for. And that three-to-one ratio is pretty much the same as the 40B ratio. It's also one that the City of Cambridge and the City of Newton use. So it makes sense from a economic perspective, and it's sort of necessary to do this. In terms of open space, there's a lot of issues, and what I've done is I've created sort of a outline. Can you just pass those down, please? And perhaps you can follow along with me as we go through this. The first thing I'd like to do before we get to the open space aspect is simply look at the second page of this, which is our analysis, or our preliminary analysis of the objectives. This is, the bold is from your flexible bylaw. The first item is, it allows greater flexibility and creativity in the design of the residential developments. I, I would suggest that this particular plan on the left is indeed more creative than the grid subdivision. I think that's just axiomatic. The plan on the left would save some of the open space. The plan on the right has what we call an 81U subdivision control open space, which is a period of three years, we dedicate one lot for open space. And at the end of that three years, the community would have to purchase it or release it back to us. It's a 1,000-foot road on the right, and it would be a public way. In terms of the proposed flex development, I'll call it flex or cluster as we go along, I forget. But in terms of the drawing on the left, that would be more of a private road. In our meeting with the department heads, everybody seemed to be amenable to that. And that, plus the fact that we would do an alternative septic system, would make this sort of a homeowners association project. The common areas would be protected and maintained with that. So I would suggest that the flexibility of the residential development on the left, whether it takes that form or shifts a little bit, would be met with number one. And in terms of encouraging the permanent preservation of open space, I think clearly the plan on the left shows some open space. We also envision that stuff on the left that's the light green to be open space. And then, we've learned that there are some other open space parcels surrounding that, actually, a lot of open space parcels. And we would provide some sort of connectivity with respect to trails and things to those. Maintain the town of Southborough's traditional rural character. I would suggest that, as you drive down Chestnut Hill Road, you'd much rather see the drawing on the left be built than the drawing on the right. You'll see houses in the road on the right. On the left, you'll see what we think is going to be a hedge row, a break in the open field. And I think that, to the extent that Chestnut Hill Road has been suggested to be one of the most scenic roads in the town, the drawing on the left or the preservation of open space is something that we'd like to deal with. Encourage more affordable and diverse housing types. Clearly, on the right, we're doing a twelve-lot subdivision, and it's high-end housing. On the left, with the bonuses, we would be developing a couple of affordable units. Number five is the scenic vistas. I think we've already covered that. There's some discussion as to what a scenic vista is. Is it inside? Is it from outside? But I think eventually we'll get to that. The unique and significant natural and historic resources, I would suggest that, because that whole area up there is old farmland, we would try to preserve that to the extent we could. And that would probably best be met with the drawing on the left. And then, facilitate the construction and maintenance of streets, et cetera, and so on. As we said, that particular project on the left would be a private roadway, and it would be maintained by that whole association. So would the sewer. And I would think that that would be the most efficient and economical for the town of Southborough. Less sprawling form of development. I'm not sure what the definition of sprawl is, but clearly, the grid subdivision has taken on that connotation over the years. And then, the last one is encourage the development of passive and active recreation. There is little or no active or passive recreation thought of at this time. The connecting trails and things like that would be part of that. And I think that, if we go forward, we'd get into that. So, in terms of our thought process to either go with the grid or the cluster, I think, to the extent that we've discussed this, we probably could meet all of those nine requirements quite easily and for the benefit of the town. But then, we come to the issues of what is open space? And this is troubling to us, because we're not quite sure how to interpret these bylaws and regulations. We've dealt with brewer states. We've dealt with another project with my associate, Mr. Sullivan, and I do have that drawing. We can look at that in a few minutes. But open space has a definition in the beginning of the zoning bylaw. And it says, "Areas not covered by structures, not used for drives, parking, storage, or display, and wetlands, ponds, and man-made retention areas shall not be considered open space for calculating the requirement of the bylaw." So, clearly, anything that isn't a driveway, a paved area, detention basin, or a wetland is open space. So, that entire site is probably going to be somewhere in the vicinity of seventy-some-odd percent open space, based on previous calculations and different projects. There's another part of this definition that says that septic systems cannot be in there in the open space. But if, in the opinion of the planning board, it would be beneficial to the overall layout of the development, then they could. And we would suggest that the common septic system in the cluster would be underground and in what's now field area, and would not impact it, as opposed to individual septic systems on the cluster. You wouldn't see those, but in terms of getting the benefit of the flexible development, I would think that we would ask for that if we didn't meet the open space requirement, that numerical value. Finally, in that definition, it says, "All open space shall be stabilized with natural vegetative cover." And the term stabilized, to me, means it has been disturbed, and you want it fixed with natural vegetated cover. So, wherever we disturb something and we restore it with grasses or trees or whatever or whatever, as long as that's a natural cover, we can count that as open space. So, my note at the bottom was this, is to discuss this as emphasized above. We can come back to that if I just go through this whole thing, and then maybe you can form opinions and guide us. On the next page, and I kept these separate so we can deal with them a little more easily. "In this particular project, open space would be twenty percent of the site preserved in a natural state, exclusive of wetlands." And that's a little bit different than the original bylaw definition. It's just exclusive of wetlands. And then, it says thirty-five percent overall shall be dedicated as common open space. The big problem we have with this is the thirty-five overall. We've been told that twenty and thirty-five additive together is fifty-five. But if you take out the word "overall" in that particular definition, it changes the whole thing. So, it's clearly, then, twenty plus thirty-five shall be. In the application of the word "overall," we think it's thirty-five percent. Lastly, when we do the alternative sewage treatment, which we assume is a common septic system, generally, alternative sewage treatment indicates your ten-thousand gallons or more under Title V. But I'm sure we, in this particular instance, are talking about common septic systems. We have the planning board with discretion to approve lot areas to be one-third of the requirement. So, in this district, it's forty-three, five-sixty, or an acre. And twenty thousand square feet of that has to be exclusive of wetlands. We don't think we have wetlands, so that really doesn't matter. So, if we do your equation of one-third, which the lot area shall be one-third, but the sentence, part of the sentence before that in yellow says, "May at its discretion approve." We have two calculations. One, assuming, presuming, eighteen lots at a third of the one acre. And thirty-five percent of the fifteen-acre site, we actually need more land than we have. Five and a quarter plus six plus six is twelve, seventeen-point-two-five, and we have a fifteen-acre site. Thinking about the word discretion above is the number B, or the letter B, which is an alternative allowing lots in the initial flex to be two-thirds, which is the beginning of the flex bylaw. That also creates a problem. So, what we suggest is that eighteen lots at a half an acre equal nine acres. Plus, thirty-five percent of the site is five and a quarter acres. And that gives us fourteen-point-two-five acres, which means there's point-seven-five acres additional to be dedicated to open space, which is what that particular section of the bylaw or the flex bylaw requires, that any reduction shall be dedicated as common land to the town or dedicated as open space. So, our problems with working through this is that we have the open space definitions and issues. And we'd like to get some clarification on how you feel we should apply that.
So, if we give you that, is that all you're looking for tonight, George? Is our feelings relative to the open space?
I think so, yes. I think so, yes. I think we're on board with Shopsey and what they want to do. We're not certain, but we're ready to pursue that. And we would be ready to go to some sort of official planning after we understand this.
Okay.
Are you also looking for the board's feedback on which plan they like and the location of the open space?
Certainly with respect to which type of plan. In terms of the open space, we haven't done any studies. We haven't looked at the land values, habitat values. All we know is the soils. And we're more than willing to listen to suggestions and advice or opinions on where the open space would go.
Okay, I'll open it up to the planning board. Mr. Stein.
Starting with the affordable housing piece, the concept of doing the units off-site, that's on an exception basis, which is not per the code due to financial or marketing reasons. So, that's point number one, if we refer back to the code. We really need to take a hard look at the thinking behind allowing that exception for doing the units off-site.
Would you like me to respond to that now, or you just...
Go ahead.
Well...
Microphone, George.
Is it me?
In terms of off-site, we think that that's the better place to put it for the owners. We don't believe that, in terms of building a unit on-site or two units on-site, has any real impact to us. The problem is that these houses are going to be fairly big, fairly expensive, fairly expensive to heat, maintain, and things of that nature. And that's really, I think, the crux or the platform that you could make that decision on. If you could put houses in another area that these people can afford to operate, then I think that is the more prudent thing that the planning board should consider.
Okay. But, I mean, that's your decision to make the houses that way, of course.
No, we have to build a certain size commensurate with what we're building there.
Right.
Yeah.
It's your choice to make the houses that you're building there that way. That's my, my point being...
Oh, there's no question.
If you made the houses smaller...
But we're not going to...
Then, it would, well, I'm just saying that, if you look at the code, that's...
Okay, that's fine.
The code is the code.
That's fine.
Wasn't that the point of going with the option on the left to have the bigger, more density with the additional lots, because you wouldn't be building the bigger houses? I thought I heard you say that. Is that incorrect?
We would be building bigger houses, big houses.
On the right?
On either one of them. They would be big houses.
I'm sorry. I thought you said something different.
Yeah, I guess, maybe you weren't here last time.
No, I was talking just now. You said that we go with, you go with the option on the left, you'd be making smaller houses.
No. No. No.
No, well, the reason that I, because I was at the Shopsey meeting when Mr. Connor went through this before, so...
He may have said lots, bigger lots versus smaller lots.
No, I mean, the density is not what I'm questioning. It's conforming to the code in terms of the affordable units being like-sized with the same amenities, et cetera, and onsite. And we've been through that, and right now, what I'm hearing is because of marketing and financial reasons.
Okay.
We're looking for that exception.
Those photographs are from a project in Shrewsbury on Spring Street, where the lots are about a half-acre in size. It has a common in the middle. And those are relatively large and expensive houses that we would envision would be similar to what would be built here. But we hear your issue on...
So, then, Mr. Chairman, I just want to refer to a section of the code 244-10D, environmental assessment. Environmental assessment, a comparative environmental analysis, shall be submitted for any subdivision creating a frontage potentially allowing ten or more dwelling units or serving ten or more acres of non-residentially-used land. In other cases, where the board determines is appropriate for light of special circumstances. The scope of such analysis, including the development of alternatives to be compared and the consequences to be studied, shall be approved by the planning board prior to the preparation of the analysis. So, my point of bringing this up is, we can look at the doodle, as you call it, but that's all subject to, the environmental analysis really comes ahead of us even considering the positioning and the scope of the open, of the plan, really. So, I think we're kind of putting the cart ahead of the horse here with the structure of this presentation.
I can understand your position. However, the site is gravel. There's probably no wetlands on the site. The environmental analysis that we would do, we can do in our minds at the office. We've dealt with Southborough for forty years.
Well, actually, maybe I should go back to the code, because the analysis shall be prepared by an interdisciplinary team to include a civil engineer and an architect or a landscape architect. So, I mean, this is, I'm really not sure that I appreciate that.
I understand, but we're not to the point where we're spending ninety percent of the budget and the last ten percent of the answer. We're at a point now where we want to decide whether we go forward with the cluster or the flex and all of that work on no resolution on definitions or affordable housing being either on or off the site, or we do a grid subdivision.
Okay. Well, then, I guess I'll just stop with, as far as the open space component. I, personally, I rely heavily on our open space commission for their review and their interpretation of things. So, my recommendation is going to be to hear them out for their, for that consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Jenks.
I'm going to steal Jesse's line and say I'm a new member of the board, only to the extent that I haven't, I don't remember dealing with any projects under the flex option of the MRD. But it was my impression that, under the MRD, you either go with a conventional plan, which throws you into Chapter 244, the subdivision regulations, or you go with the flex, which takes the place of the subdivision, which would negate the issue you just raised, I think. I'm not sure. But is that the correct interpretation of that?
So, they have the choice to either go conventional, conventional subdivision, or they can choose to go special permit and present a flexible plan or conventional plan, and the planning board would work with the applicant, and they would decide. So, they can go conventional.
They're talking about flex.
Well, they are, because they are trying to solicit the planning board's feedback, and that's when they mention they're doing their due diligence to see which way they will end up submitting this application. I'm assuming that's what they're doing. I can't take, and just remind everyone that, under the bylaw, is required or recommended that they come in to talk informally. So, this is informally. They're not at the point of doing an environmental assessment. That would come with a formal application. I think, right now, they're just out meeting with Shopsey, and Shopsey talked about the different, the three options, planning and then open space.
My question is, is the environmental assessment a requirement if they choose the flex option?
I believe it is.
It is?
It's in the subdivision regulations, so, but I believe that...
But doesn't the flex kind of take them out of the subdivision rules and regs?
No, I believe they'd still have to follow that. So, I think they'd still have to do the environmental assessment.
You mentioned, I believe, that, I think you made the assumption that the town would like the looks of the flex plan on the left.
Yes.
Something because of a hedge...
We would buffer the housing with some sort of green planting, so that when you so that when you looked in from the road, you would see X number of tens of feet of, of, or hundreds of feet of field.
And you would not or could not do that with the plan on the right?
The two lots right off of the Chestnut Hill Road would certainly have setbacks and houses located as close to the street or roughly as close to the street as permitted.
As close to Chestnut Hill Road or the internal street?
Both. The lot on the left.
So, in the middle? So, in the middle? Of the lot? If the house is-
Yes, yes.
Okay, in the middle.
But close to the front, generally.
And you wouldn't put any hedge or buffer on that?
Oh, there'd be some plantings, but you wouldn't see a field. You'd see a subdivision.
Like Jesse, I give a lot of credence to the definition and interpretation of the open space requirements to the open space commission. And I know at least a couple of them are here tonight, so maybe we can coerce an opinion out of them. I'm through.
Mr. Mills.
So, not to belabor the point, I look for the open space committee too for their interpretation of it. The way I understand it, it would be the twenty and the thirty-five, but I know you have a different opinion.
It would be twenty plus thirty-five is your opinion?
Yeah. In terms of the, you know, which one looks better, you know, it's going to be your project to put forth. Yeah, I would probably agree with you, you know, the open space. As you round this corner, I used to drive that for, I drove that way for fourteen years straight. So, you know, it'd be, it'd be great to see it, to have that view. In terms of the actual affordable housing, I, I agree with Jesse. I think the intent of having affordable housing, you know, is to have it, not, not to try to put it in one location of town, but to try to have it mixed throughout the, the community. You know, so I, I understand the, you know, there might be a competing goal. The one thing, if it, if it were ever to be approved to be off-site, I would want to make sure that it was going to actually happen. The land was going to be given. It was going to be built. It wasn't just cash given to the town, but the appropriate number of units were actually going to be built. But again, that is not my preference. My preference would be that it would be built on-site. That's all, Mr. Jim.
Thank you. Mrs. Bartolini.
I, I do prefer, as you guessed, that the left site layout with the green hiding the project is a, to me, a more aesthetically appealing way of laying out the site and utilizing the land and protecting some of the land. And I like the, the common. I am aware of the project in Shrewsbury, so I can, I have a feel for what, for what and how you did it there and it's attractive. Maybe this is a question for the chair or for, for the planner. I'm not sure. It seems to me we already had this conversation on another subdivision concerning what does overall thirty-five percent open space mean? And I thought we had gotten a letter from the town council to the effect that the way it was written, twenty percent this, but overall thirty-five percent inferred that twenty, up to twenty percent could be this, but thirty, the overall open space requirement is thirty-five percent. So, I guess I'll break the stream here of the, yeah, I like the, the fifty-five percent and say that to avoid a taking, I would see it more as a thirty-five percent with an attractive layout, something that we negotiated with them, but not something that automatically starts out with you always fifty-five percent of more than, more than half of your project. And I also have a question that sort of came up from your comments, Phil, that we have a provision for conventional subdivision. We have provision for a flexible subdivision. We also, under the conventional subdivision, have ways that you can have special permits and waivers. So, again, I guess I'll look to the, to the chair as to how, that it's almost like it's not two alternatives. It's three alternatives that they could come to us and say, we want a subdivision, but we want to waive that or this and that authorization is within the existing subdivision regulations. Is that true?
I think the way I'll answer that is that at this point, it's, it's more yes than no and that the planning board has a lot of authority and power to, you know, be flexible. Certain things can be, once we get into a flexible situation, then there's negotiations and there's give and take. And some of that can go beyond, you know, the words in, in the regulations. For example, I think we've had, in the past, we've had recreational components that were, that are not in the, in the code as a requirement, but have been offered or suggested and provided. So, you get, you get these different elements that when you combine them, it's, it's acceptable to the neighbors, acceptable to the planning board, and acceptable to the proponent. And that's, I think, where we're at right now in this form of discussion. I think this is good that the proponent is hearing, you know, the opinions of the individual planning board members. And that's why this item is called discussion. Normally, we wouldn't, well, we, we would be going through this type of discussion, but it wouldn't be as informal. Did I answer your question at all?
Well, I guess what you're saying is, is that we have been kind of talking two alternatives, but in fact, there's three alternatives.
At least, in my opinion.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, me too, so, okay. And it sounds like a three, so, okay.
We all set, Kathy?
Yep, I'm all set.
You can see that there's a continuing disagreement on whether it's thirty-five percent or fifty-five percent. This isn't the first time we've had this discussion. It's not the first time we've had a subdivision where this discussion's come up. And I think in the past, we've, we've been able to work it out. It's my understanding, and my, my memory could be wrong, where depending on your definition of open space and the types of open space that the board has approved, that you could get over fifty-five percent if you look at and, and have certain categories of green space considered open space. But again, I think unless something's changed, I believe that the open space commission, which I believe is comprised of five people, if the majority of, of that commission still considers the fifty-five percent as, as, as the requirement, and if the board, if the planning board defers to that, then that may be inconsistent with, with what, what the board has done in the past. We appreciate and cherish the open space commission and their, you know, work with the open space around town. But they are advisory and the planning board has the authority to make its decision relative to the percentage, whether it's thirty-five, forty, fifty-five. And, and I think in the past, the board has leaned more toward the thirty-five percent, but also looked at green space that may not be green and open under, under conventional, but maybe not fall strictly under the definition of open space. So, at, at least from my, my experience, there's many different types of open space in town. Some of it is recreation, some of it is passive, and some of it is just woods with no access. It's quite a bit of types. And so, I think we would, at least I would encourage you to continue with the plan on the left and not get too wrapped up between the thirty-five and the fifty-five percent. What percentage is, is the roughly, George, is what you're showing there? If, if you don't include the common?
Well, I, in terms of just those green shaded areas, I would say one on the left is maybe twenty to twenty-five percent of the overall site. If you looked at it, you could probably get three more of those boxes on it. I think the common is open space as well, but, you know, some differ on that. But when we go to the base definition, it's really only where there is structures, wetlands, or detention basins that are not considered open space by the definition. So, we're very confused with how that applies. If you remember Brewer Estates, we actually had seventy-nine percent of the site as open green. Lawn, backyard, and area down below, excluding wetlands. A lot of wetlands on that site as well. And then I brought Brody Lane or whatever that project was off Deer, Deerfoot Road, that big drawing. I can show you that, but that started out with a concept with a center island, a common. And it was finally a subdivision road that came in off of Deerfoot and it had virtually no technical open space, other than a strip out to Clifford, if you recall that. So, we really have a problem applying this from an engineering perspective. And it becomes a long, drawn-out, confrontational issue in the last couple of projects. And I know that in Giblins, he just said, we'll do frontage and subdivision lots. I think I'll just open that plan up and let you see what happens.
I'll just comment on your, your comment about lawns, front yards, and backyards. I don't think we've ever counted those as open space. Every house, every home in a residential district in town has a front yard, a backyard, and a side yard, and we don't consider that necessarily to be open space. Unless, you know, the front yard is substantially greater and backyard and side yards are substantially greater than, than the setback requirements. So, you might, again, there's some flexibility in, in looking at that. Looking at the plan you have here, it doesn't seem like any of those lots would fall into that category. But again, if you start adding, I mean, we get, we get focused on these percentages. And if it's less than fifty-five percent, somebody's not happy.
Yeah.
And if it's seventy-nine percent, but you're counting every blade of grass, anything that's green out there, I mean, that's, that's a little bit on the other side of, of the interpretation.
And that's the problem, the interpretations of the written word. And really, the only thing that we can go on is engineers or attorneys or whatever, is what the bylaws require. And we look at that and we're confused. And we've worked, I think, hard to try and understand that and be able to apply it to this site. I didn't even do a calculation if it's fifty-five percent, but we'd need another four or five acres of the site to be able to develop it. So, I don't, I don't know the answers to those.
Well, I think if, if you came back and, and gave, you know, even if it's approximate, but a little bit better than what we just went through here tonight on the percentage. It would look to me like the, the common area, the green common in the middle, plus the field, would be somewhere above thirty-five percent.
No question.
And maybe it might be less than fifty-five percent. So, now you're in that area where the area of disagreement. So, there's other things that you're proposing, like the affordable component and the off-site component. And you've, you've had the meetings with, with the people who advocate for the affordable housing. And that's a, that's a piece that if it was part of the whole package brought before the, the planning board, the planning board may say, well, if you've, if you're above thirty-five percent and maybe you're under the fifty-five percent, and this is the quality, not just the quantity, but this is the quality of the open space here at this site. And then if you had another site where you had the affordable units and there was an open space component to that that may be completely different in, in character or nature than this neighborhood, but it may benefit another neighborhood, then that's something else that the planning board would put into the formula and say, this whole package, maybe individual pieces, some of the individual pieces don't fully comply, but combined, it's a good thing for everybody, for, for, for the different neighborhoods and, and, and for the different programs, the open space program and the housing program.
I, I do think that that's where we're trying to go without developing final plans. We need to know where we're going to go before we spend all this time and effort identifying a potential off-site place, which some people may not even want on this board. So, our decision really is, how much money do we put into chasing the open space as opposed to doing a twelve-lot grid subdivision? Here it is. It's got the road and the profile and the catch basins and drainage. We need an approval.
Before I open it up to the neighbors, I would suggest that you come back with, you know, a little bit more math relative to the open space. And similar to the discussion we just had, which is, looks like it's somewhere between thirty-five and fifty-five percent. If you came back with that number and it was thirty-six percent, then it wouldn't be as strong as if it was fifty-four percent. Anybody else on the board I want to open it up to the neighbors?
Yeah.
Mrs. Bartolini.
I forgot to ask for a little bit more clarification as to whichever way you go, you're building enough units that you're triggering some affordability requirement. And you mentioned that duplexes were going to be a problem, which I'm not sure why. You can explain that to me. And the off, the idea of building them somewhere else in town off of this site, I think is a problem because of CHOPS's position. Have they taken official position to that?
Well, there's some discussion within CHOPS on that as well.
Right, that's what I thought, so.
Some despaired opinion on that. But one thing I just want to mention, I believe with the conventional, there is no affordability component. That's, that's for the flex on the left.
How many units is in the?
Twelve. Twelve is, this plan here to my right is the conventional twelve lot by right plan. Twelve is, this plan here to my right is the conventional twelve-lot by right plan. The one on the left is the flex. The one on the left is the flex, and that's the one...
I thought twelve triggered at least one or two, but...
I don't think so.
Can I answer that? I think I can answer that.
Yeah.
If we do a flex, we get the benefit of additional units for providing affordable. But if we do a conventional, the only thing we have to meet is the subdivision control law, which doesn't have any zoning components, other than the lots be whatever the zoning is.
Okay. And what did you say your duplex problem was?
When we do a duplex, we now have a multifamily development, and that has all sorts of crazy... You think it's tough trying to figure out this open space. If you read that multifamily section, you have no idea what's going on. The buildings have to be a thousand feet apart, and it's very poorly written. And we don't want to go anywhere near that.
Yeah, well, I was aware it was poorly written, but, okay.
So I'll open it up to the neighbors. Anybody want to speak? Going to need a microphone.
Yes, Whitney Beals, ten Chestnut Hill Road. I have a question for you first. What constitutes an abutte by definition in town?
Three hundred feet from the project.
I think my family's in a abutte. Just so we know that, we know that fact. Now, Mr. Conroy, with all due respect to your excellent expertise as an engineer, there may be a lot of gravel on the site, but I've lived on Chestnut Hill Road since I was four years old. I've lived other places, so it's not been continuous, but that's been my home for that long. Many a time, I've driven down that road, or ridden my bike down that road, or walked down that road and looked into the field. I've also walked the field because it's never been posted. And after a heavy precipitation event, there is a low spot between the low hills out there, water ponds out there, and stays around for several days. That, to me, says there's at least a clay layer fairly close to the surface, even though there may be gravel farther down. So just, you should be aware of that. You probably haven't been around or seen the site often enough, maybe under those circumstances, to know that. But I'm certainly very much in favor of there being meaningful open space for this project, not a three-foot strip around the perimeter, which is totally unenforceable and absolutely meaningless, and has happened in this town more than once. And to me, that's a subversion of the open space bylaw. Never should have happened, and I hope never happens again. And there has to be some entity in town that's willing to step forward and enforce the provisions of whatever open space is put on record by you good people. We saw what happened in the Barn Lane incident, situation, where everybody sort of, you know, looked the other way and let some homeowners get away with things that they shouldn't have been able to get away with. And that's a good lesson for all of us, and let's not go through that again. But it's upsetting to me, as in a abutte for sixty-five years, to know that a beautiful hayfield's going to change, but it's also something that I figured was inevitable, that it's very expensive land, very tough for the town to step forward and protect it. We really didn't have the opportunity to do that because it came out of Chapter 61A, was out for over a year before whatever purchase and sale agreement has changed hands actually happened. But I do like the concept plan on the left. It's a whole lot better than a conventional at this point in time. I don't know, you know, what's going to unfold as the process moves forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Freddie?
Hi, Freddie Gillespie. I'm a member of the, stand at the mic. I'm a member of the Open Space Preservation Commission, and we did meet with the applicant, and we had, I thought, a pretty good discussion. I'm a little surprised, though, that we didn't get to see this ahead of, we weren't even notified that you were meeting tonight. If we hadn't seen it on the agenda, we wouldn't have known. So in cooperation, it'd be nice if we got a heads up and if, you know, we could respond to this better if we had actually seen it. And when looking at this, and I'm speaking, we met, it was a casual conversation. We weren't weighing in on the plan. We went over the requirements of the bylaws. So I'm not speaking of the opinion of our commission because we didn't have an opinion more than, we just talked about what we believe the requirements are. And the thirty-five versus fifty-five percent requirement, it's sad that we're still having this discussion this many years later. You do have town council's opinion, and he did weigh in that it was, depending on which section of the bylaw you're reading, it's ten percent and twenty-five equals thirty-five percent, or twenty percent, in this case, twenty percent and thirty-five equals fifty-five percent. And I think if we could just agree to accept his interpretation, which I believe was an eight-page letter going through all of the open space documents, plans from whenever, back before nineteen eighty-six, that would be a starting ground, and you wouldn't have to debate that every time. Then you could look at it and say, well, it's not quite fifty-five, but it meets other requirements, and it's meeting the needs and the goals of the town. Sorry, I'm shaky voice. And just take that fifty-five, thirty-five off and get to the meat of it that this here does look better than that. Is it close enough? And like Donnie was saying before, if it's twenty-five percent, well, maybe not. But if it's thirty-five percent, getting better, but we're looking for closer to fifty-five percent. That's a lot easier than just starting out with, is it thirty-five or fifty-five? And I think that's something the planning board could do so that every subdivision that comes up, for at least the past fifteen years I've been on the open space, that we don't have to have this debate back and forth, wasting the applicant's time, our time writing numerous letters. You have town council's opinion. You know, why not just stamp it and say, yeah, we're going with it? And then you can do your flexible. We can change it. It doesn't have to be exactly fifty-five. Our commission would still weigh in. I'm not saying what we would say, but, you know, at least have a starting ground, and everyone would understand what they're looking for. And then as far as the two forty-four, that's for subdivision. Whether you're going flex or conventional, it's still a subdivision, and it actually lists in your code that special permits do not alleviate the requirement to go under the two forty-four. Do you know what number that is? Under major residential, you can find it. But I did have a question to, sorry, G three. I did have a question under the conventional subdivision. Is there a planned shared septic unit there?
No.
Are you aware that all those wetlands and the stream are outstanding resource water?
Yes.
And you have a four-hundred-foot setback?
We don't need that.
You don't?
Microphone, George.
Well, may I ask you? I believe there was a four-hundred-foot setback for septic.
No, that's not true. Mr. Sullivan is the sanitarian, dealt with these septics in South Pro, and his testing and his report to me are that he needs to be one hundred feet away from the wetlands that are shown on the right in the top of that plan, and two hundred feet away from the stream that is not shown but is at the bottom of the plan.
Don't make a comment on that. I believe the MWR...
It's Whitney Beals again. I believe the MWR is the abutte on virtually all sides of this property. At least it has rights to maintain the land that goes around the top of the property.
I don't know who's at the top, but I think MWR is down the bottom and to the left.
Correct. But I believe the MWR also has rights to manage the waterway that skirts the perimeter of the property.
I'm sure they do.
Yes. And that means that that's an outstanding resource water as well. So whatever rules applied outstanding resource waters could apply to the entire property since they're surrounded by MWR interests.
We'll look into that.
So I was just bringing it up that it's something to consider when you're looking at, because you said there was no constraints on the, the septic didn't provide any constraints on how many lots you have, and it's just on, it's not an open space issue so much as if it's not twelve lots that you can put septics on, it could be less units here. But that's just the first part of how you determine how many units. In looking at this, too, you know, whenever we're talking about the open space, and I'd like to have time to go through the numbers he had at the end, but when we're talking about being flexible, the reason to do the flexible is to provide open space is the first reason, I believe, intent of the flexible subdivision, for all the reasons of the community feeling and habitat. I would say you do have passive recreation because bird watching's the number one, one of the number one passive recreation sports in the country, and anyone driving by there looking at birds is enjoying passive recreation in my mind, so, I mean, that's a bonus. But, you know, we don't ever talk about, well, if you're going to make a change, it's always give less open space. Why not squish the houses closer together? That's the intent of the clustering bylaw. So instead of, say, just pretend it had to have a third of an acre of land, well, I don't think we'd object if it had a little bit less and we had a little more open space. So when you're talking about being flexible, that's certainly another area you can look at, although I believe the bylaw does allow you to get the fifty-five percent in and get the housing lots in with their bonuses. Again, we'd have to do the calculations. Thank you.
Mrs. Bartolini?
I'm still confused about the affordable housing. The duplexes trigger distances of a thousand feet and questions about management of a complicated open wastewater treatment facility. Off-site has not received a stamp of approval from CHOPSY yet, and I don't think is going to get one. How else would you address affordable housing? Because the point that Freddie was making, that the purpose of flexible development is for flexing, I happen to believe that one of the reasons for flexible zoning is to allow for more green space, but I also think it's to be flexible in the provision of the way we provide housing. So her point of making the house lots smaller in order to get the green space but still have the housing, what's your reaction to that? Or what other plans do you have, knowing that affordable housing is in need of the community that we're looking to have subdivisions address?
The plan on the left has, houses a lot more than the plan on the right, and consequently, using less land, those lots are going to be much smaller. So I think that begins to answer your question, but in terms of affordable housing and open space, that's a provision in your zoning that we may decide to take advantage of and present plans that you may approve, but we don't have to.
No, I know you could go conventional.
Right. So in terms of trying to make all this stuff work and understand how it works, the plan on the left seeks about thirty-five percent open space when we get done with our calculations. We certainly want enough land for each house lot because they're going to be fairly large houses, and we certainly want to be able to affect the affordable because there's bonus provisions for doing that, but we don't believe that they should be in that particular project at that size, and those people have to maintain heat, electrify all that on a monthly basis.
All right. I'm interested, I'll still be a lot more interested to see how, since everyone seems to say, yeah, we like the left plot, plan better, as to how that intermingling of open space and affordable happens, and it may be having to take some different position on wastewater treatment with the new technologies that can be done so that some of that land gets counted.
Well, the wastewater system is going to be a common septic system because it's going to be under ten thousand gallons a day. So DEP allows us to get a border health, local border health, no more state, for a common septic system, which will have some components, but in terms of it giving more open space, it's underground. I don't know that it has to be deducted because you do have the ability. However, the area for that leach field is going to be relatively small with that type of soil, and we don't really think that's a big issue, but we would like it in open space rather than carving out a site for it. Now, if I flip over that lower plan to what was actually built... That's Deerfoot and the road that comes in, this is a separate lot for the septic area. So, you know, that's, I don't know how many houses is that? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight or nine houses? And we're going to roughly double that. The soils there are tills, so we have gravels, and I'm going to suggest that the septic system won't be any bigger than that. But that's a separate parcel, and in the open space, it's useless, if I may say so, even though it's one of our plans, but that's a grid subdivision.
Anyone else? George, I'm going to ask you to give us your perception of, a summary as to what you heard tonight, and then we'll see if we agree with, that you heard what we think you, that we said. Can we do that?
Yeah, can I talk to my client and email it in tomorrow?
No.
I have to be in Hopkinton at nine o'clock. I think you knew that.
Oh, okay. I thought, okay, sure.
So I would...
Just a one minute, I mean, did you hear that the left-hand plan is...
Yes.
Is still on the table?
Yes. I heard that the left-hand plan is something that may be easily approvable, except that we have a lot of issues with definitional applications to the plan, which bothers me from a couple of perspectives, from an engineering perspective and from a definitional perspective that could be appealed and put us in jeopardy. In terms of some information that we learned about the site with open space and the surrounding ownership interests and connectivity, and Mr. Beals about a little wet spot that he says in that site, I actually said we should go out and look at that a couple of weeks ago, and we are getting a wetlands guy to look at that. But in terms of what's there, whether it's twelve or eleven lots, or eighteen lots with open space, it's our belief that either one of those is buildable, but we have to be assured before we spend all the money and time going through this process because we have deadlines and commitments. And I don't get a comfortable feeling with respect to moving units off-site for affordable, nor do I get a comfortable feeling with respect to moving units off-site for affordable. nor do I get a comfortable feeling as to what open space is from that perspective. I think the board may be easy to deal with, working these out with respect to quality and quantity and balancing those, but I'm not sure that it is in the best interest of the client to presume that.
So what's the next step for you?
I would have to get back to you tomorrow on that after talking with Mr. Wheeler tonight.
That's what I thought you'd say, that you'd want to consult and then, you know, sleep on what you heard here tonight.
Yes.
And then get back to us. We're here.
I think it was productive.
We're here for you, so we're not going anywhere.
No, I know.
There's no, we're, we're giving you no deadline, but we're here for you and if, if you need another meeting, agenda item to discuss this again or to discuss new details, we're here for you.
I understand that and I appreciate it and I think we've made significant progress with all of the boards and your board twice, so.
Anybody else?
Thank you very much. If I could get my colored drawings back?
Uh, oh.
Oh, yes.
The houses?
The houses.
Yep. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Okay, and thanks, everybody. The next.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mills.
Make a motion for a two-minute recess.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded, any discussion hearing on all in favor? All right, two-minute recess.
Planning Board is back in session after two-minute recess. A couple of administrative items for the Town Planner to bring up. Jenny?
We have plans to sign, the plans you approved tonight, but I also have Fitzgerald's plans to re-endorse because they weren't stamped and also the registry would not accept gray scale, so he had to convert it to black. So we have the members here tonight, so I'll pass that along. On the table is material for the next meeting, so it's homework for you. And then the last item is Park Central, which I'll turn over to Phil.
Well, why don't you just, before Phil, just tell us last week about the plans and what you've done with them.
With Park Central, are you referring to?
Yep, yep, the engineered, so-called engineered plans.
Sure, so on Tuesday, we had plans, plans were dropped off on my desk, but both Hillary and I were out of the office for a conference. So let me just read the letter from the ZBA, from the Chairman Leo Bartolini, dated November 10th. Attached, please find a set of engineered site plans for Park Central 40B. Please review and submit any recommendations or comments in writing to the Zoning Board of Appeals by November 25, 2015. The Board's next hearing regarding this matter will be held on November 18, 2015, in the hearing room at 7:00 PM. If you have any questions, you can contact them directly. So my understanding is, and I have two agendas, one for Wednesday, November 18, their meeting for Park Central, and then December 2, their meeting again for Park Central. Do you want me to mention the letter that we sent with? We also, on Friday, Don and I met just with concern about the Board, Planning Board, and other Boards and Committees, and the public having enough time to review these very complex plans, so we requested additional time. I didn't think the Planning Board would be able to get through a very complex, comprehensive plan tonight, and would request that they, requested an extension or whatever it might be, to give Town Departments, as well as Committees and Boards, time to thoroughly review these and be able to give feedback. And the public time to give feedback as well, since this is the first time anyone's getting a look at these plans.
And these plans have been in the queue for about six months?
Um...
It was last June, last May, that it was agreed, maybe it was later than that, that it was agreed that the next step would be the engineered plans?
Yes, they've been talking about the engineered plans, but they're dated November 4th, so again, not really giving much time for Boards and Committees to look at this. My understanding, too, is Fussin' O'Neill will be reviewing the plans, so we would want to see Fussin' O'Neill's comments as well.
Very good.
Is F and O reviewing them on our behalf, Concoms?
On the ZBA's behalf.
ZBA's behalf.
And Conservation, too, is just getting these plans as well, so whether they will have Fussin' O'Neill review those, or their own consultant, I'm not sure.
Anyone else? Mr. Jenks?
Mr. Chairman, I watched the video of the, I think it was November 9, zoning board meeting, the latest in their continued public hearing on the 40B. And there, the Chair did allow people to ask some questions about the project. I listened very carefully to those questions and the Boards, zoning Boards' answers, and walked away with the impression that the answers were less than adequate. I know one of the people who asked questions is sitting in the audience, and I'm going to try to just summarize what the questions and answers were, and if I am wrong on yours, feel free to correct me. One of the questions, and I believe these are all the butters, that is, direct butters, and one said that she thought that the 40B was going to be discussed at the ZBA that evening, and then the townhouses would, there would be further discussion on the townhouses at a later, at a later date. Basically, she was told no, that the 40B was being that discussed that night, but the townhouse decision on the use variance was already made, and she expressed that she thought that this thing was kind of being pushed through very quickly, that according to the zoning board, they would have three more meetings on this project, and then take their vote on the comprehensive permit. A gentleman stood up and asked about the traffic reports, and when was there going to be a revision to include the townhouse project? And the answer to that was, they weren't planning on doing further work that, and this gentleman raised the point that the townhouses were not included in the traffic reports. The ZBA stated that that didn't really matter because the reports that they had were based on 586 housing units, and they're now down to 364. So that was well, the implication there was that, well, that's got to be much better for traffic, so therefore, we don't need to do any more. The, another question dealt with the Planning Board, and the question was, when does this project, and I think the gentleman was referring to the 40B, when does this project go before the Planning Board? When do I have a chance to talk with the Planning Board? And the answer was, there is no option to talk with the Planning Board on the 40B. That is completely up to the zoning board. And a statement was made, which I think was just not carefully thought out, because the zoning board did say to that gentleman, something to the effect, well, you know that there is an agreement with the neighbors that has been signed by all the butters. It's my understanding, six people have signed that, or six families have signed that agreement. Clearly, not all of the butters. I think that was just a, just a slip, but I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to correct that. So I got thinking about this, and I was disappointed with the answers. So I'm going to make a proposal that the Planning Board conduct a public meeting for informational purposes, not a public hearing, not something we have to go out and post notices and advertise, but a regular Planning Board meeting. Our Planning Board meetings are all open anyway, and we invite people to ask questions and express opinions. And I think it would be improper to do that without inviting Mr. De Petrie. I would also suggest inviting the Chair of the Zoning Board, and invite them to sit up here with us at that public meeting, and entertain questions from anybody who would like to ask questions. We won't have the answers to all of them, but I, seems to me, we could, the Planning Board could make a commitment to try to get answers to anything that gets asked that we don't have answers to, and see if we can provide a service to the town. There are a lot of people that I have talked to who do not understand the difference between the 40B piece and the townhouses. They clearly don't understand the difference in the regulations to implement each, and they clearly don't understand the, the normal role in the townhouse project that has been taken away from the Planning Board. And I think it would be a service to the town if we could entertain some questions and try to provide some answers. So it's my suggestion that we schedule a meeting and do that at a meeting. I want to go back and say, on a little bit different part of the topic, thank you for responding to the Zoning Board, that it's just not appropriate to try to do a review of that drawing set on the schedule that they've proposed. I'd also, as an administrative thing, like to do whatever we can to get on the distribution lists of any of the work that Fuss and O'Neill is doing for the Zoning Board, and probably be appropriate to try to get on the, on the distribution list for any other Boards that are commenting on the project, for our own education about the project. So I'll just ask for, through the Board, through the Chair, for any comments anybody has on that proposal, whether you think I'm crazy to even be thinking about doing that, or whether you think it would be a good idea to take that on.
Thank you, Phil. Why don't I just go down the line? Mr. Stein?
Well, I emphatically agree with Mr. Jenks's points, particularly the traffic study. Having personally reviewed the publicly available traffic studies, they seem consistent with a 180-unit project, not the current number of units in the current plans. So I have very grave concerns with this process and where we are in the process. If this is, the Planning Board's only recourse is to, in effect, plea for a meeting, a public meeting, then I suppose that's what we should do. I would like to explore, you know, to see if we have any other recourse of a stronger nature, but if that is the best we can do, then by all means, I would support Mr. Jenks's proposal.
Thank you. Mr. Mills?
Has that happened in the past? I'm just wondering, has the Planning Board asked for the ZBA to, a joint meeting like this in the past? Not, I'm not going to say I'm new to the Board, but I'm newer than you, Mr. Chairman. Just curious, are we stepping into new ground if we do this?
I don't think so. However, I can tell you, I believe that because this is the largest, or one of the largest projects ever proposed in the long history of the Town of South Pro, that it certainly has, you know, very serious consequences, a lot of moving parts, and, you know, deserves a high level of attention, and certainly not a rush job. In the past, the ZBA has, in my opinion, crossed over into the Planning Board's jurisdiction on small projects, and although we've brought that to their attention, we were able to resolve the actions and work together to get site plan and variances, you know, worked out so that the neighbors and the Boards were able to move forward despite the crossing over into the Planning Board's jurisdiction. In this case, the impact could be very, very significant, and so it does raise itself to a higher level that would, may, is what Mr. Jenks is proposing, which is a completely separate meeting where the Planning Board and, the Planning Board would try to be able to discuss all the items of the two projects, because essentially, there are two projects there. There's the 40B, which is under the jurisdiction of the ZBA, but then there's the market rate unit project, which is next to the 40B, but is not the 40B. And again, because of the history of previous actions of the ZBA, the Planning Board wrote several, has now written several letters to the ZBA, asking or recommending that the lines of jurisdiction be understood and complied with. That is something that we, I don't think we had done in the past, but again, because of the magnitude of this project, we felt that as, as long ago as last December, the Planning Board wrote to the ZBA, reminding them of our concern about jurisdiction. And there's been other letters since then. So I don't recall having Planning Board hold a separate meeting, but I can tell you that I don't think we've ever encountered two projects of this magnitude, side by side, and looking at the use variance, as Mr. Jenks pointed out, there are items in there that we believe cross over into the Planning Board's jurisdiction way beyond the authority of the ZBA. Did I answer your question?
You did. And I agree with you, due to the size, the impact this project has potentially to the town and every, and the neighbors, and just the population itself, I would be in favor of a joint meeting.
Andrew, did you, I mean, Jesse, did you?
I had a question in terms of, what is the Board of Selectmen's role? And, you know, it seems like the Planning Board and the ZBA almost have, you know, an adversarial relationship at this point, and I'm wondering, is the Board of Selectmen, you know, kind of overseeing both of us, and are they, you know, in full view of these, of the correspondence between the Boards, and do they understand what's going on right now with this project, in terms of us being rushed to review these plans and comment?
First of all, the only people that have jurisdiction, or that have oversight over the elected Planning Board, are the citizens of the Town of South Pro, the voters. We're an elected Board. The ZBA is an appointed Board, and I believe that whoever handles those appointments would then be overseeing their actions. People oversee our actions. I believe that the Selectmen are aware, they've been copied on the letters, expressing our concern about the jurisdiction, and now, most recently, the letter that we sent on Friday about the very, very short timeframe that's being proposed to get this through. You've got, ZBA has proposed a meeting on the 18th, December 2nd, and December 9th. We've been waiting many months for these plans, and then, once we get them, we only have a short number of days to review them, and I just don't think that that's appropriate, and that's why we wrote the letter. As far as an adversarial, I think if you looked at the letters that the Planning Board has sent, they're proposing to work together, and as the people of the town expect us to do. But we can't, we can't just, because we all want to get along and work together, we can't push aside the fact that some of the authority that is solely under the Planning Board is being assumed by the ZBA. We can't, we can't just, we're not doing our job if we sit back and let, and just let that happen. Did I, did I answer that?
Yeah, that does answer it, and you know what? I think that if Phil's plan, for some reason, doesn't pan out, or if it's not agreed to, I mean, personally, I would like to get on the agenda of a Board of Selectmen meeting to discuss the situation.
Mrs. Bartolini?
I have mentioned several times having problems with the way the review of the project was occurring, in particular, when sort of two projects got merged into one, and one was really a 40B that fell under a 40B law, and one was sort of a subdivision that was coming along to help make this economically feasible, in my opinion. However, I think we're at the 11th hour. I think we've got to figure out a way of doing this, if we do it at all, in a way that is seen as being helpful, and that doesn't look like we're saying, this is our jurisdiction, you took it away from us, because under 40B, a lot of Planning Board jurisdiction just disappears. It goes to the ZBA by law.
Just about all of it.
Right. The same is also true, well, to a lesser extent, because they don't really have any authority, is, to get to your question about Selectmen, is that Selectmen don't have a lot of authority about how and where an amount of development occurs. So their role in 40B is way, way up in the front of the project. The state sends a letter to the chief elected official, whether that's the mayor's office or the Selectmen's office, and says, we have before us a proposal for X number of units. At this particular place, you have 30 days to respond to us. The theory being that in the process of developing their response, they're reaching out to those Boards that have development responsibilities, such as a Planning Board, or police and fire, and Boards of Health, and things of that nature, who are superseded otherwise through 40B. So this has been, it may seem like it's a fast project, review of this project, but it's been sort of a prolonged one, and it changes, and everything goes fast, and then there's a big late wait, and then everything goes fast, and there's a big wait, and there's a communication gap. But for, I'll take the, one of the examples given, the, we need, you know, we need to give them the opportunity to ask us the question about, what are you going to do about the traffic analysis, because the type of development occurring on the site has changed, there's now stores, as well as townhouses, as well as the 40B. The answer is, we don't know. And nor do we have the authority to extend for so much as a day or a month, the approval of the project while that information is gotten, because that falls under the ZBA. So to some extent, we could be helpful in getting questions out there, but we could also only cause people to get more frustrated, in sense, the better we articulate the questions, the more we don't get the answers to those questions.
But Kathy, what about the question of safety? I mean, we're talking about, we're talking about a traffic study that was based on 180 units. It's 330 units.
It sounds like a terrible answer. My answer to your question is, under that law, it's not our jurisdiction.
Can I just?
We could have raised it back on the 30-day review period, way back when they asked about the site, and we did have a meeting, and we had people come in, but we didn't send a letter anyplace based upon that meeting, and technically, you know, we don't have jurisdiction at this point.
I think also, we ought to keep in mind that we, we should be talking about administrative issues now, and not anything substantive, because this wasn't posted as a specific item on our agenda. So I'd hope we wouldn't get into the answer to what about safety, and... And I would be remiss if I didn't point out that when the question was asked about, when do I get to talk to the planning board, Aldo came forward and said, basically, I don't have his exact words, but there will be two opportunities. One is when the engineering, the site, engineered site plan is reviewed, or the planning board does its residual site plan review.
Residual?
Yeah, they will do that at a meeting, and you can go and ask questions. And the second, oh, that was on the townhouse side. And on the 40B side, he just said the planning board will set up their own meeting relative to 40B comments. To address your point of not being able to answer the questions, that's one of the reasons I suggested inviting Mr. De Petry and at least the chair of the zoning board. I hadn't thought of this as a joint meeting of the two. I'm not sure I'd be opposed to a letter to the zoning board asking them to conduct this meeting and instead of us. I would just like to see this kind of informational meeting take place. I've tried to watch this process for a long time now, and I have questions about it that I don't understand. I suspect that I have looked at it a lot closer than the average resident or a butter even.
No, you've done a fantastic job.
A lot of questions that remain unanswered, and maybe they'll get answered in time, just in the normal course of things. I want to make one other comment, and it deals with the schedule that the zoning board is imposing on us for the review. The ZBA chair said that Mr. Marchand, who is the consultant that the town is using, the ZBA is using, has said-
Very high standard.
Two to three weeks is a standard time for local boards to get their feedback back to the zoning board. And the zoning board said, when we did the Madison Place project, we didn't get a single response from any local board. So I don't know what happened with that procedure, that Madison Place was approved before I got on the board. I don't-
My observation is that Madison Place did its homework, and it of its own volition went to each of the boards, presented what they were proposing to do, why, how, asked for input, made some adjustments based upon that, but, and then went back to the ZBA. But each board had its own informational meeting relative to this, especially those issues that were, that fell under your purview and were responded to. I think your point that there isn't enough time to do a quality review of the detailed plans now presented to us. I think your idea of asking them to do a joint one with us with the purpose of talking about this unique process where a site plan review has been specified to us, and how mutually we perceive that happening. Because one of the things that's been stated to me is that the reason the site plan was able to be constrained to cover only this, this, and this, and specifies what you can talk about, is that the project, the 40B project is up here, and that's going to be built first, so that, and all of this capital necessary to make this work, even though it's down here in the second part of the project, will be built first, and it is necessary for this, and that's why they got to review it, because it was part of the 40B project. And now, part two will come along and utilize the pre-built capital work necessary. Buy it, don't buy it, but that is part of how they're selling their right to review, do the site plan, and limit specifically right down into the wording of the decision, what we can and cannot look at in part two. So that may open up a chance to structure it the second way you thought about it, to talk about, well, just how is this going to work, and what is the timeline for that? Because this is unique. I don't even know where it's happened anyplace else, much less what's the history of it happening here in town. So that's my opinion.
Thank you. Going back to what you said, I think it's a complete total agreement that the 40B project is under the jurisdiction of the ZBA and not the planning board. But there's two projects here. There's the 40B, and then there's the market rate units. And that project falls under the jurisdiction of the planning board. Crystal clear. I'd like to just read something.
But if you've already put your capital in to do the 40B project, then it becomes a moot point relative to layout of road, or where the lighting is going, for the second part of the project, which falls under us, because all of this was decided in the review of the 40B project. That's why I was, what I was told was the justification.
The, on the Southborough website, there's the comprehensive permit regulations that the ZBA has posted. And there's a section at the very beginning, talks about town department review. And it says, "The applicant is encouraged to meet with and to discuss their proposed development plans with the following town entities, as the board will typically ask such town entities as the board deems may be appropriate for comments and recommendations related to the proposed comprehensive permit development project." So the following departments, town departments, they're encouraged to meet with. Board of Selectmen is the first one, building inspector. And then the third one says, "Town Planner and Planning Board, to review the plans for completeness, accuracy, and compatibility with good planning, design, and development practices, including but not limited to such factors as traffic, public, transit, housing, and land use objectives. The town planner and the planning board may suggest ways that the plans and the application might be improved, and may make recommendations to the board relative to the application." That's the 40B. That's the 40B regulations. And there's one other item here. just read this other one. Technical team review. In order to expedite the review process, the board may, at its sole discretion, appoint and direct a technical review team to assist with the review of the application and to advise the board regarding technical details of the application. The technical review team may include such individuals as one or more board members, the town planner, the building inspector, the town engineer, representatives of other town boards or committees, such as SHOPESE, one or more neighborhood representatives, and selected advisors to the board. So again, the largest, or one of the largest projects ever to come to the town, and you would think that if those sections that I just read, relative to 40B, aren't exercised for this project, then when would they be? So again, the ZBA has targeted November 18th, which is day after tomorrow, and then December 2nd and the 9th. Those are all Wednesdays, as they're continued public hearing dates. So there's a Monday after the Thanksgiving weekend, which is Monday, November 30th, as a possible date. Are we going to, are we talking about that? Are we talking about having a separate meeting? Or have we not agreed to that?
Well, right now, that's not currently in our list of upcoming meetings. Am I correct, reading, looking at the agenda?
Right, this would be, this would be-
This would be something new.
A one-agenda item meeting. It's a separate meeting that Mr. Jenks is proposing.
We don't meet again until December 7th. And that's why we sent out that letter of concern, because you'd have one meeting, which is tonight, to review plans, and then December 7th, and they want comments the week-
November 25th.
Right, the week of Thanksgiving. So it doesn't give much time to review a complex project. Can I just comment quickly to Kathy's points that she made, that the 40B jurisdiction, as you know, does fall under the ZBA? And I think it is wise for the planning board to be helpful at this point in reviewing what Don read in the regulations. And also, you know, the ZBA is appointed by the Board of Selectmen, as Kathy said, and their role early on was to send the letter to the state with comments, so that the applicant could get their letter of eligibility. So I think right now, it's prudent that the planning board takes the time to review these plans. Yes, do it at a public meeting, and invite, you know, residents, et cetera, or other board members to come if they'd like to help facilitate-
I like Phil's idea of also inviting the chair of the ZBA and the developer to be here, because there's a possibility that some answers would come out that haven't yet. But it also presents that extra line item on that agenda of how we collaborate on the second part of the site plan review, as this entails the two, almost two separate projects, but they're, they're not being looked at as two separate projects. But they do have two phases of site plan, and that maybe we could get some positive collaborative discussion out of that.
I also think if you're scheduling a meeting about an applicant's project, it would be just wrong not to notify him and invite him.
Right, right.
Mr. Chairman, can I raise a point of order?
Sure.
Following on Mr. Jenks's comment, Sam Stivers, Seven Presidential Drive, member of the Advisory Committee, but speaking as a private citizen. I'm troubled by the fact that this discussion is now 30 minutes' worth on a topic that is of great interest to the town, and as you point out, Mr. Chairman, of great significance to the town. And I'm surprised to see it on the, in the conversation, because it's not on the agenda, as Mr. Jenks provided. I just checked, and it's not there. And I think that one might argue that there's an exception for things that show up that were not reasonably anticipated. On the other hand, as I heard the town planner say earlier, we knew, you knew apparently several days in advance, certainly soon enough to get on the agenda today, maybe even Friday or Thursday of last week, ZBA met last Wednesday. There are a lot of people who are interested in this project, and while you're not necessarily deliberating or making, you know, great strategic decisions that are going to impact the project necessarily, this is all relevant to the process that's playing out through the ZBA. And I think, I'll bet that had this been on the agenda late last week, my bet is there would have been a lot more people in the audience tonight to at least listen, and hopefully people who are interested will hear that the topic did occur, and that you spent, you know, 30-plus minutes or whatever talking about it here, and will take it-
We didn't even have the plans then.
Well, but it sounded like you had the request at that point, and it was not unreasonable to expect that was going to be a topic for discussion. Somebody apparently knew, how did it get on the agenda tonight?
We also had the Veterans Day holiday fell right smack dab in the middle of the week.
Regardless, it seems to me that there was relatively little effort made to get it out on the agenda, to let people know. It's a big project, an important project, and I think it's incumbent on all boards, not just the planning board, to do their best. I've criticized the ZBA for this same thing in the past, where they've changed the agenda, and they've known days in advance, and nobody bothered posting it on the town's website. So I would strongly urge you to be more aware of that, and be more considerate of people's interest in this project going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
And by the way, Mr. Morris, I appreciate the plug for the regulations at the ZBA that I wrote for the 40B stuff a number of years ago, even though we've disagreed on many things in the past. So sadly, it appears those weren't followed in this case, or at least as closely as they should have been. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm the guilty party, that's right, as always.
Thank you, Sam. Well, are we, are we going to schedule a meeting or not?
Yes.
When?
I like your Monday, the 30th of November suggestion.
Yeah, that works for me. I am out of town. I don't need to be here.
Oh, this was your idea, and you're not pulling that one on us.
Well, I mean, is everyone opposed to meeting, one of their meetings?
Pardon?
Going to one of their meetings, if they put it on one of theirs? I mean-
Well, I think if it was, if it's our meeting, we're able to control the openness of the meeting. And I think, as Mr. Jenks, one of the reasons that he's proposing this meeting is that there's, there's an element of the, of the ZBA meetings where the discussion is not as open as we would hope it would be. So that's the purpose of having the meeting, the planning board meeting, so that we, we have the ability to run the meeting, even though we're more than welcome, you know, members of the ZBA, and of course, the proponent, to come to the meeting, and anybody else. But I think the whole reason that Mr. Jenks wants to have the planning board meeting is so that we're not subject to the conditions of a ZBA meeting.
Is a week from tonight too soon? The 23rd at 7:30 PM?
I will, I'm out of town.
Pardon, you're still out of town? Okay.
I'm out of town Thanksgiving week and the following week.
What's on the agenda for the 7th?
On the 7th, we have a public hearing for modification of an approved site plan for Volvo. Other than that, nothing.
For Volvo?
Volvo. They're just took down trees.
Okay.
The, the sooner than later, again, day after tomorrow is the continued public hearing, first time they'll continue the public hearing with the engineered plans. And we would have the benefit of the contents of that meeting- And we would have the, the benefit of, of the contents of that meeting on the 30th. If it goes to December 2nd and we, we propose a meeting on the following week, they'll, they will have had two ZBA meetings before we have a chance to meet and hold our meeting.
I, I just think we're going to have to be flexible. I mean, we're going to ask them to, you know, by the time we get a letter drafted and sent to them, it's going to be four business days at best if they, to give them a heads up that we'd like to meet with them, that's all. So I, I'm in favor of if we can do it earlier, but I think we're going to have to be flexible if we want to make this happen.
And I'm willing to go to them. I mean, I think, I know, I've, I've heard your, your reasoning for convening it, but that if this is to be collaborative, if something positive is to come out of it, if we're going to improve the communication, it may be saying, well, we got to hold the meeting because you haven't been too good at doing that in the past, is going to be counterproductive to achieving that. So going to them, I think, may be the beginning of putting out a hand of cooperation.
Yeah, but my only concern with that is, Don just read from the code, from the, the 40B regulation, that part of their process should be coming to the planning board. So-
It's they can.
I think it's written, yeah. As, as we think it's a good idea to do that.
Well, I think it's a good idea.
You're not-
Agreed. But I'm just saying, Jesse, in the same respect as we couldn't reply to their request for comments on the plan that they asked for by, you know, within a week or two weeks. I mean, now we're asking them to all come to a meeting with us in four days, four business days. So I, I mean, we, you can't-
Okay, so I, I would just say, I agree with you on, on terms of being flexible on the timing, but my strong preference is that it be a planning board meeting, personally.
Well, Andrew, you do make a good point, but I think it, the scheduling by the ZBA of the 18th, December 2nd, and December 9th is, isn't that accommodating to, to this board and, and the other boards and the public?
I, I think they are talking about making their decision on the 9th. That will be their third meeting from the last meeting. And on their schedule, they were only talking about three more meetings. This next meeting on the 18th is a meeting to discuss landscaping in the, as the 40B. I don't know what the next two are. Maybe I do.
Well, it's quarter of 10. I'm willing to do whatever you want to do.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Chairman, my point was-
You've won me down.
I, I'm, I'm in favor of just getting a meeting. That was my point. Whether or not I think it can happen by next weekend, I don't know.
Why don't I circulate doodle survey? My other thought, and I know, again, this is because it's being rushed so quickly, is does, is it too late to put together a request that the ZBA consider putting that technical group together of the different boards and committees? Because I'm sure the planning board's not the only board and committee that's struggling to get comments into the ZBA regarding this project. So does it make sense to have-
I would recommend doing that.
I agree.
Reference their regulation. That's their regulation.
So, so the town planner will do that. So what was the availability for the 23rd?
23rd?
Which is next Monday?
After 7:30.
It could be available.
Kathy?
Yep. I can do it.
So the 23rd is a possible date and how about the 30th, same?
No.
Phil's not, you're, are you available the 23rd, Phil, or you're away too? So, okay.
30th.
Why don't I submit-
The first Monday after Thanksgiving, right?
Right.
Again, I don't need to be.
Well, again, going, focusing back on what Mr. Jenks said, having watched the tape, it seemed like members of the public had questions. And so if, if we meet and make ourselves available to the public and they have questions, we'll try to get the, the answers. Or at least they'll be able to air out the questions to the planning board. And if nobody comes, then it'll be a short night. I just think we, this, you know, to do our job properly, we have to follow, certainly the suggestion of Mr. Jenks and to make sure that, we're not trying to kill the project. We're trying to make sure that all of the, that the whole process is, is performed within the jurisdiction of the appropriate boards. Nothing more and nothing less. Any other suggestions, comments, questions? Mr. Stein?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five to zero, we're adjourned. Thank you.